Remember that only ten days or so it was very wet outside and cool and we complained about where the warm weather was. And so here it is. So this is good. So we'll last about another two or three days and then we'll start to complain about the warm weather. Well, as soon as the bugs come out. One of the things I love about spring and to me is when I leave, walk out the door at about quarter to six or six o'clock every morning, it's quiet. We get six months of quiet outside and there's a crunch of snow and a breaking of ice underneath foot as we go to outside and partake in the cold weather. But then there's all of a sudden, there's that one morning in spring when you walk outside and it's just loud. And you go, oh, what is that? And it's the songbirds every turn. And it's just amazing the difference that that makes in one's spirit as you hear those songs and you know that spring is here and that the cycle has been completed again and that we can start to enjoy the warm weather again, look forward to it. It's also construction season for the city of Steinbach, as many other communities. We're forward to a busy construction season as well, so that we can delay traffic, so that the people who supply bricks for our cars have more work and the gas stations require more work because we're idling through all the repair zones. But it is good to be here and it's good to have spring and it's good to be at council.
Thank you, Councilman Siemens. There is one other sign of spring. And that happens on a Saturday morning when I'm looking out the window at my store serving coffee and I see a certain councillor in Spandex riding his bike. Probably De Kleefeld.
I'm glad you said his bike.
Yes. All right. We have the agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda? Councillor Fair, second by councillor Funk. Any discussion? All those in favor, carried. We have the minutes from April 5th on page one. You've all had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion to approve those, please? Councillor Funk, second by councillor Swagstra. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. Then we will skip the public hearings and we will move on to the Old Tom tendering, the Old Tom report in regards to city man. Mr. Warrentine, you had a report in regards to Old Tom. That tender award does need to occur. It was over budget. Do you have anything addition to add to the recommendations you've made?
I do. The information for council's benefit is, starts on page seven in the agenda package. My, my report background as well as some options that council may want to consider were provided at the last council meeting on April 5th. That item was tabled. Since that time, I have added a further option that council may want to consider as far as seeking the sufficient funds to, to be able to proceed with awarding the full tender. In addition to what I had reported previously, there is also the further option that council may want to take to reallocate existing 2016 budget funding for a number of projects that have been budgeted for the coming year and reallocate those funds to, to the Old Tom Road Tender Project to be able to do the full, the full tender award for the asphalt surfacing proposal. The, the details are quite lengthy and they are listed in that report. I am prepared to, to respond to council questions if there are any more information.
Thank you. Counsel, you've had four options as well as you've been able to look at the budget yourself and see if there's anything, how would council like to proceed? Councillor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we proceed with the full tender of Old Tom Road to Batumix Paving Limited with the extra funds to be taken from either surplus or from the Capital Development Reserve.
Thank you. Is there a secondary? Councillor Fair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all recognize that the paving of Old Tom Road is long overdue. This is a section of road that is well-used in our city. We have a number of people who live in the area that have complained about the low quality of this road for a long time. We've had this in, in the plans for a while. We've had to put it off before because we know that it's expensive. The time has come to do this. And yes, the tender came in a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than what we had projected. Sometimes we will, we will reduce scope and sometimes we will delay a project. This is not one project, this is not a project that we should delay and this is not a project where we should reduce the scope. We need to do this now and we need to do this right. And so what the motion provides for is that we go ahead with the full asphalt surfacing along the section of road that had been planned along Old Tom Road and that the extra funds, which would be about $200,000, would come either from surplus, and we often do have surplus at the end of the year, and if there's not sufficient money in surplus, then that would come from the Capital Development Reserve. I should point out that $480,000 is currently coming from the Capital Development Reserve, so it is certainly legitimate to use funds from that reserve for this type of project. If there's not enough in surplus, it would require taking more out of that. The Capital Development Reserve would have approximately $500,000 in it, so that would lower it, certainly lower than what it's been the last few years, but there is still enough money in there in order to be, in order to be able to proceed with this. So I think that is preferable to canceling other projects and it's definitely preferable to delaying this, the project again or reducing the scope. So this is how I think we should proceed.
Thank you. Councillor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with councillor Swagstra. I would not be in favor of delaying this anymore. Costs go up every year, so if we're going to delay any part of this, it will only cost us more money. And as I understand, I think that's what the development fees are actually for, supposed to be for infrastructure and that kind of thing, so I agree that that's, that's where this should come from.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Penner?
Yes, I'd like to ask administration a question, if I may. The Capital Development Reserve, are there any designated projects in the next few years that are supposed to come out of the Capital Development Reserve? Any specific projects?
Off the top of my head, I cannot recall which specific projects have had preliminary funding from the Capital Development Reserve allocated, other than to say that as a normal course of budgeting process, depending on the level of either new public infrastructure or reconstruction of streets or underground infrastructure, there is a significant dollar amount that is normally funded by the Capital Development Reserve.
One more question, Mr. Mayor, if I can. There was mention of using surplus if it happens this year, if we have a surplus. Can you give me an idea of what the surpluses have been for the last few years?
I believe that 2015 financial statements, although not formally adopted by council, there was a, an available amount that was able to be transferred to one of the city's reserves in the amount of $300,000. So that would have been essentially the surplus available at the end of 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Anything in closing? No? Counsel, this is obviously an important project. We've been talking about it for a number of years. This is going to improve the service along Old Tom Road. It will obviously be something that's welcomed by many residents in our community. It is a challenge when we have a tight budget. This year, we did not have any rise in taxes and thus there are some challenges finding extra dollars. But as we move forward, we have had a history of having small surpluses in the past and if we can use that surplus to get this work done, I think it's, it's a wise decision. Also, if there isn't enough surplus in the end of the year, if it is a tighter year than normal, then there is also the opportunity to take it out of the development, Capital Development Reserve. And I think that's also appropriate for this type of project. So I think all in all, it's a, it's a good plan, although it does reduce some of our abilities to move forward with other projects in the coming years, so. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. Then we'll move to delegations and as I did one month ago, I will excuse myself due to a potential perceived conflict of interest when it comes to Northview Development. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to close the council meeting and I'm going to ask, open up the delegation. So Mr. Schenkel, I believe you have something you'd like to present to us. So I'll give you five minutes.
Thank you. Yes, it won't be longer than that. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. I guess you got me again. My apologies for not bringing the other guy. Glad that first slide. This is the Steinbach North subdivision that we're proposing. We have, at present, we have two accepted offers on the property and one of which is Petrocan, which we think will be a landmark kind of development. They're looking to do a big card lock system there, which, and with lots of lights and it's going to be, it's going to be a special feature, I think, for the city. Next slide. Our current status, so we've got a bare land condo approved. That means we've got approved for low-pressure sewer, 24-foot asphalt streets and swale drainage. Next slide. This is probably not terribly clear, but the thing I'd like to outline is that it is a 24-foot top and showing the, the swale drainage. Next slide. The added conditions, so we've had added conditions from the city that took away many of our perceived savings for a bare land condo. We're, the city has requested a sewage treatment plant or facility, which is 12 by 12. It's supposed to be brick clad. It's also, you're also asking for water, a single water meter, which would create some issues for the metering of the water. And because we've had buyer resistance on, on the ongoing operating costs, simply because we don't know what those operating costs are going to be, so we definitely had buyer resistance on that. So our request is to change the condo to a regular subdivision. That means we would go to a full gravity sewer, which is, I think, what the city would like. We'd go to 32-foot concrete streets and, but still retain that drainage, swale drainage. So the only difference to the Winnipeg, to the standard for the city is the swale drainage. And you'll see it here. It's, the 32-foot top is shown there, which allows for better truck access, all the rest of that. So our reasons for these changes, we think it will be a better product while maintaining a competitive price of our end product. And of course, that's, that's maybe not terribly important to council in, in the beginning, but at the end of the day, we need to have an affordable, affordably priced lots coming on the market. In the event of a storm sewer, a swale drainage is superior to a conventional storm sewer, maybe not very important. Public perception, I think, is important. When people drive into the subdivision, they'll see a nice big wide road and I think that's, that's a good thing. Probably the most important item, it allows for gravity sewer tie-in to properties for further development to the north. And I think that's a, a long-term consideration. If, if we have a bare land condo here, it really will not, with, with low-pressure sewer, it will not allow future tie-in. So in summary, we feel the city will end up with a better product. The road will increase from 24 to 32 feet. We're going to upgrade from asphalt to concrete and we're going to upgrade from low-pressure sewer to gravity sewer. These changes allow SLH to be competitive in the marketplace. They produce an aesthetically pleasing and well-functioning development. And of course, again, I want, don't want to overstress, it allows the tie-in to the properties for future development to the north. And this is the picture of what we're trying to emulate. Other than this is a 24-foot top, we'd be looking at a 32-foot top, which is eight feet wider than the road that's shown here. We think it's a good deal for the city. It's going to bring added taxes of $800,000 a year to the city, once it, once it's all built out. So I'd welcome any questions that you have.
Mr. Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. During your presentation, you mentioned that you did not want to go with the bare land condo concept because the city requirements in regards to the low pressure is, is too costly and I certainly understand that. Could you not, is it not possible to go with a bare land condo and have all the city specs and you have your swale drainage? Why not go with a bare land condo with the swale drainage and everything else in the city specs and then you don't have any of those other issues that are mentioned here?
Well, we're still offloading the services, so you've got sewer, you've got water, pardon me, you don't have water. You would have snow clearing, garbage removal, grass cutting, all that would still be, and you'd still have to collect condo fees and there'd be condo management fees. So there, you're still not a pure titled property. And there, there is, quite frankly, there is buyer resistance to it and, and we've experienced it.
Any other questions, councillor Funk?
To enhance your swale or through, to enhance your swale or the drainage, to ensure ongoing drainage, would you be looking at a concrete bottom for that?
It could, it could be a concrete bottom. Our engineer also has experience with doing drain tile, which is buried with, with some pumps at the end of it. Some pumps, it's not the right word, but pumps at the end of it, which clearly eliminates any, any residual water that you might see, let's say, on that hespler, does not have concrete bottom or it does not have drain tile. And so water does tend to sit in there. So yeah, one of those would be solutions that we would look at, yes.
Does anybody else have any questions of? Okay, if not, then I, I think we've got enough information here. And so seeing we disposed of A-Day, we're probably going to be moving into it, so you can have a seat. And I'm going to close the delegation portion of the meeting and I'm going to open a council meeting and I'm going to ask council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Siemens?
We made, made a motion to approve the, the ask here for that through development agreement, that we agree with gravity sewer, 32-foot concrete street and the drainage be as requested with no curb and gutter.
Is there any secondary to that? Councillor Kerry Penner? Would you like to speak further to that?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the city of Steinbach has a long history of industrial parks in Steinbach. There are no industrial parks in our community that have not been built by the city or the town with taxpayer dollars. The city has, one of the advantages is over the different times where we've built industrial parks, we've also had provincial and federal funding to pay for industrial parks and to help us to that end. And the city develops the industrial parks in the past and they have then sold off those lots at, at cost. So there's no additional cost to taxpayer, but that is to bring in industry into our industrial parks. We have a variety of different versions of industrial parks with the streetscape and as we saw, the hesper, just off hesper, that industrial park has a concrete with ditches as being proposed here. The industrial park on the west side of Steinbach, Industrial Road has curb and gutter with ditches. Frontage Drive has curb and gutter, but no storm sewer. Lund Road has curb and gutter. The streets within are gravelled and some of the off-streets. Ickers Drive and Industrial Road to the north are to the new spec that the city came up with. One of the reasons the city came up with spec is because we have such a wide variety of different streetscapes in our industrial parks. We wanted to standardize that and I understand that. I think that's, that's good. Now we have a developer who comes to Steinbach who wants to open a development in an industrial park and build an industrial park on the development dollars, not on our taxpayer dollars and not on, with a whole lot of government funding. They will get funding for the intersection, but the rest of it is borne by the developer. So one of the asks here is that they, the drainage is, is to remove the curb and gutter and keep the swale drainage or to go to a swale drainage and go away from the curb and gutter. They're going to increase the, the concrete from what is in hesper to, from 24 to 32 and 32-foot concrete is very close to our standard and gravity sewer. That means the city then now takes responsibility of snow clearing, of, of mowing the ditches and so on. It becomes a city entity. More important thing here is that attracts business to Steinbach. We have an opportunity here to bring business to Steinbach. We have not had a major manufacturer move here in the last 10 years. That will employ entry-level employees and other, and bring other individuals as employment to Steinbach and we need to start doing that. Our industrial parks have largely sat empty and we have, while we have buildings going into them, there isn't a lot of manufacturing going into them that provide jobs to our community. For all of those reasons, I think that the ask is okay here and I think that the city should approve.
Thank you, councillor Siemens. Councillor Penner, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, councillor Siemens has been very eloquent with his comments, so I won't have a lot to add, but I do want to say that in this case, I feel that city specs need to be relaxed. I, I believe it's in the best interests of the city to relax our specs and allow this development to go forward. As councillor Siemens also mentioned, we have not had a great number of industrial applications and new buildings and new businesses coming to Steinbach. So we need to make sure that we have very affordable places for businesses and industries to, to locate. And really, the, the major difference in the specs here is the swale. And looking at the industrial developments in our city, the swales are fine. The swales are working, I think, quite well. I have not myself ever heard of any issues with the swales, nor are they a great cost to the taxpayer when they cut the grass and make sure everything drains. I think it's quite minor and the benefit to the city is enormous. Thank you.
Councillor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think a few things need to be clarified. I'm not voting in favor of the motion. All this talk about industrial. This is not industrial zoning. This is not M1 zoning. We look at our package, this is C3. We are talking about commercial zoning. So when we talk about the comparisons to industrial, this is not industrial. We're talking about manufacturing. We're talking, this is not that. This is commercial. What is allowed in commercial? You can have, you can have retail, you can have offices, you can have some uses that have some, some overlap between industrial in terms of there's some uses that can be allowed in both. We're not talking about industrial development. Here's the question that we need to ask ourselves, because it's something I've given a lot of thought over, over the last month. The question we need to ask is not, can we live with having ditches in this particular section? That's not the question. The question is, are we prepared to say that in our commercial zonings, that from here on in, we're now saying that open ditches is now standard practice in the city, in the city of Steinbach? Because that's what it does. It creates a precedent. And if, if we don't think it's a precedent, ask yourselves this, ask ourselves this question. If we had another develop, if we approved this and five months later, six months later, we have another developer with another property that's zoned the same thing and asks for the same concession, of course, we're going to grant it because then we're treating, we, because we're not going to treat one differently than the other. We have to have an equal level playing ground and that's why we have our city specifications. This is not a standard variation type hearing. This is not a variance it's being asked for. This is for an actual change to the city specifications. And so the question we need to ask is that in the long-term thinking, in the long-term thinking, do we want to say that in commercial zones, that we are going to remove the standard of curb and gutter? So not just thinking about this particular property, because in this particular property, you, there's, I can see the arguments. I really can. I can see a legitimate case where in this property, it's kind of unique, but this isn't a one-time variance. This is changing the specification and it creates a precedent. It's going to, it's going to make it very difficult to have any kind of, because now when the next applicant comes along with another request, are we prepared to basically say that, well, anything else that comes along that's reasonably similar, we're automatically pretty much having to approve it? So all this talk about industrial, this is not industrial. This is C3 commercial. And so based on the information that, that we, we've had in the presentations and we've had in terms of our, our staff information here as well, I think it's important that we also have the opportunity to ask our city manager if there are any comments and any implications here. For example, I think it would be good for us, us to ask the question, does this have any implications on negotiating future development agreements? That's an important question for us to get answered in order to know the type of impact this would have. So I'm, I'm concerned if this goes ahead, that we're setting a precedent. And a reminder, this is C3. This is not industrial.
Thank you. Councillor Swagstra? Any other comments? Councillor Penner? Susan Penner?
Question to administration?
Yes, you may.
To administration, in terms of, as councillor Swagstra was mentioning, setting a precedent, why is this not a variance? Educate me, why can't this be, or why is this not considered a variance? And why is this considered a change to, a change in specifications like we're changing our standards?
For council's benefit, the city of Steinbach has developed, updated and maintained its construction and infrastructure specification manual ever since its inception. The current document is approximately 150 pages long. Council has provided that document periodically for review. The construction specifications within the city of Steinbach are continually monitored and maintained and evaluated by professional staff within the city that have credentials, experience and knowledge to be able to administer standards throughout the city, not only for the city standards, but also to make sure that its infrastructure and all its systems operate and can be maintained on an effective, long-term basis. Insofar as that document, it is a major policy document of the city of Steinbach. And again, as I mentioned, every so often, council is provided that document when there are updates or as a review process. That document does apply to all development in the city, not just commercial, not just industrial. It applies to residential, institutional, every property development that is connected to any city service, whether it's sewer, water, road or other service, is listed within that document. It's a comprehensive, far-reaching policy document and as councillor Swagstra alluded to, the request that is being made by the developer is not, not to be confused with a variance application. It is not a one-off because variance applications pertain to the particular property. This specification applies to all public infrastructure within the city. It is a significantly different impact if there is a proposal from council to change a construction specification within the city.
Do you further?
I guess I just don't understand why we can't set it up as a variance. That's just, that's my, like, why can't we?
Because variance applies to a land use application. What is being requested is a change in public infrastructure in a public right-of-way. Variances apply to private property. Construction specifications apply to public infrastructure in a public right-of-way. There are two completely different areas of jurisdiction.
And then I have one more question in terms of zoning. It's C3. Is there a lot of difference between what C3 and, I guess, if they would switch to industrial, like, if they would switch to industrial zoning, does that, would that, in theory, would that have alleviated concerns?
Plain and simple, there are completely different land uses that are permitted within those two different zonings. I did refer to the, some of the land uses that are permitted in the meeting of April 5th. I could read those sections of the city zoning bylaw again if council requires them for background information.
Councillor Siemens?
Through you, Mr. Premier of Administration. The motion is that through development agreement, that this one application be approved in that regard, not to change the city specification.
Correct. However, by setting the precedent of changing the city specification for public infrastructure, that is opening- that is opening a door for all other development in the future to expect the same treatment. The key difference, or the key issue from administration's perspective is to recognize that infrastructure specifications are set and applied consistently across the City of Steinbach. If this exception is granted for one developer, I would fully expect that all future developers would also expect the same treatment.
I've got a question of Mr. Warkenke. There's been a lot of mention made about the industrial or commercial development on the east side of the city. Is this going to be any different than that is, and has that worked well? Or it keeps coming up. It came up last time and came up again today. Has there been a problem with that, or is it working fine there?
Are you referring to the Hespler Industrial Park? It has functioned adequately for the type of configuration that is there. That particular configuration, there is a road allowance that is narrower than what the standard road allowance requirement is for this development. The development in Hespler Industrial Park is industrial in nature. It has a completely different public service impact, only because as industrial land, it tends to service a significantly lower level of traffic than a C3 zoning would be expected to service. And in addition, that particular construction spec was what was acceptable 20 years ago. The current construction spec that is presently the case, which is sodded boulevards, curb and gutter drainage, or curb and land drainage sewer, has been in place for virtually all years shortly after that Hespler Industrial Park was developed. If you refer to the more recent industrial lands that the City of Steinbach has developed, both on Iker's Drive and on Industrial Road, that has applied the current infrastructure spec standards to that development. It's curb, it's landscaped boulevards, and it is land drainage sewer that is currently within the city's spec.
Thank you, Mr. Warkenke. Is there any other comments? Would you like to close the debate?
Yes, sir.
Counsel Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The motion is that we change it for this one application that's before us. It's not to change the city's spec. The last time, there's been very few times that somebody's put in a development of this type, and I think that each time, it'll come to counsel. If that is the ask each time, then that's the ask that comes before counsel. Precedent is a strange thing. We set precedent for this one, that could be that we're setting precedent. Each time we make a decision, we're setting a precedent of some sort. One of the things that we get here, though, is we get development in Steinbach, and I think that's the critical thing for us. I appreciate Counsel Swagstra's response. I think that is accurate. We do need to ask ourselves, how does this affect the future development within Steinbach and the C3 zoning? That's very accurate. And I think that at this point, this is a one-off. To me, this is a one-off with the request as it stands. It's not a change in the city's specification at this point. That decision and that discussion doesn't come at a council meeting. That discussion comes at an SPC meeting where we get full response from staff. We're not the experts on it. By far, we take recommendations from city management, but we also make decisions based on what we think is best for our community. And at this point, the way it looks to me, and with all the information I have at this point, I think this is a good decision as it moves the city of Steinbach forward.
Thank you, Counsel Simmons. Well, counsel, this is a very, very heart-wrenching situation that we have here, and I see both arguments. And I guess my business person at heart comes out when I see something like this. And we are all looking for commercial development. There's no developer that's going to do a better job at promoting than somebody that wants to sell his property. And I think that this is an opportunity that we have as a city to promote the city, and I think that they're going to attract a lot of business to this community, which is going to, in the end, bring us tax dollars. I agree with Counsel Simmons, this is a one-off. This is not something that we're going to be doing every time. If this comes up, and if this does pass, I think this is a one situation, and the next one might not fare so well. And I know that argument is always more difficult to do when we've made this decision, but, so I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Proposed? Counsel Kerry.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just for purposes of clarification, and so that administration is clear of exactly the specifications that counsel has approved, may I have that proposed resolution read out again, please?
I'll ask you to. Right? We'll just say I never sat in the seat. How's that, Dave?
There was going to be a real slight.
I think basically, counsel, I think it's basically encapsulated in the, on page 19. And would you like to word that for?
The motion will read something like this, that the City of Steinbach approve through development agreement, a one-time ask for this development, that it goes to city specification for gravity sewer, 32-foot concrete street, and swale drainage, and no concrete curb and gutter.
And water?
Oh, sorry, and pipe water.
Thank you. Clarify that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, counsel, we have the accounts payable in the back of the book. Can I have a motion to approve the accounts payable, please? Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Funt. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the financial statement ending for March 31st. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Counsel Fair, second by Counsel Simmons. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the building permits for March 22nd. This is on page 26. Counsel, this is actually for March, and so we see those numbers there, but just so you are aware, April's been a very busy month in the building permit department, where they've been working on, I think they were working on, although not confirmed, almost $15 million worth of permits just for April alone, so just an indicator of where things are heading. But we do have a resolution on the bottom to accept the March numbers. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Swagstra. Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have 9D, we have the bylaw, the realty tax bylaw on page 27. We need third reading. Can I have someone move that, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Counsel Simmons. Counsel Funt, second. Any discussion? Anything further from counsel? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the bylaw 2063 in regards to business tax levy. This is page 32. It's a motion for third reading. Counsel Swagstra moves that, second by Counsel Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have minor subdivisions on page 36. You've all had a chance to review those. Any questions on those? Seeing none, we'll move to, I'll ask someone to move the minor subdivision approval, please. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Funt. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have excavator licenses on page 37. You've had a chance to review those. We have a resolution on the bottom of page 37 to approve those. Counsel Swagstra, will you move to approve? Thank you, second by Counsel Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Any questions of counsel? Counsel Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not really a question, but it's the best opportunity for me to do this. I just want to draw everyone's attention to the gallery. There is a student of mine, last class, and who's sitting right over there, and she wanted to come, and she's in grade nine, Green Valley School in Granta, she's with her dad right there. She wanted to come and watch a council meeting, because I showed some YouTube clips of counsel and looked so excited that she wanted to come. And now she knows that her name will be on YouTube, and with all the views that we get at our city website.
Which are significant, some months.
This could go viral. So I just wanted to draw everyone's attention and welcome I here.
That's good. Welcome here. Any other questions or statements of counsel? All right. I do have one question, and that is, counsel, there have been a lot of different things going on with the Building Canada Fund, and I would request, or I'd ask your permission to ask administration to give us a report in two weeks' time, just in the New Building Canada Fund and some of the new rules or the relaxed rules and regulations when it comes to that and how it pertains to the different projects that we have. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Good. So I'll ask administration to give a report on that in the coming, what information they can gather at that time. Thank you. 11A, we have the Province of Manitoba Mobility Disadvantaged Transportation Program. This is on page 44. Take that as information. 11B, we have the Province of Manitoba General Assistance Grant Building Manitoba Fund on page 45. This is a standard grant that we get every year. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll take that as information. And 11C, we have the Seine River Conservation District Minutes. Take those as information. And 11D, we have the JCAP Library Minutes on page 55. Any questions?
I'll just make a comment.
Yep, please.
Carolyn Graham has now been the librarian for, I guess, probably six months, two years, somewhere in there. And I just wanted to make the comment that she's doing an excellent, excellent job, and she's been, she had big shoes to fill, and she has more than filled them, so I think I just wanted to give her a little shout-out for the good work she's doing there.
Good. Thank you. Take those as information, then. There's no other business. Before I ask for motion adjourned, there is one other thing that happened today, and that is our MLA, who was re-elected between the last time we were here as a counsel, and now was re-elected. We certainly want to congratulate him on that. And the other big news today is that he became a minister of the provincial government, and I think that'll go well for us, and we wish him all the best in his work. And I know he's got a big job to fill when it comes to both his, not only the portfolio, but as house leader, and so I think that's really exciting for him, and I know he'll serve the province well, so.
Counsel Fair?
Did you make a recommendation that we write him a letter congratulating him?
Yeah, that was the next point, so yes, very good. We can all agree on that, so we will do that. Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Simmons, Counsel Funt, any discussion? None? Call for the question. Thank you. All those approved.